Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Fred Brink. I'm the mayor pro tem. I will be filling in for Mayor Brent Gary this evening as he's on travel, attending Energy Consortium Alliance meeting in Los Alamos. So with that, I will call our meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And I will, before we start, I'll ask Stephanie to read the hybrid meeting rules and then call roll, please.
All right, thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor pro tem to use. You can change this by right clicking on your video view and selecting rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit your comments to three minutes. All right, roll call. Richard Bloom?
Here.
Fred Brink?
Here.
David Fettow?
Here.
May Hayes?
Here.
Kate Moran? John Smart?
Here.
And Councilmember Stoker asked to be excused for tonight's meeting.
All right, council, may I have a motion to approve Councilmember Stoker's absence?
Move to approve the absence of Councilmember Stoker.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. I will now ask Councilmember Smart to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Smart.
My pleasure.
Council, the agenda is before you. Councilmember Bloom has requested to move item six H to the regular agenda. So it will now be listed as item eight G. And the executive session that was scheduled earlier is no longer needed, so it should be removed. Does council wish to make any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. So tonight, we have a presentation with Mid Columbia Libraries. And it's my pleasure to invite Sarah, Sarah Swan to come to the podium right now and give us a briefing on the Mid Columbia Libraries. She is accompanied also by Jason Bond, our librarian.
Thank you. Thank you, council and staff for having us here today. It's a pleasure, as always, to present on what took place in the year of 2022 at our West Richland Library. Next slide. Okay, so much like the city of Richland's recent survey, we did a community survey assessment in 2022, and we now have a new mission statement. And so that mission statement is Mid Columbia Library empowers people, supports learning, and strengthens community through literacy, enrichment, and connection. Next slide. Okay, so Mid Columbia Libraries has 12 branches. Our collection moves throughout these branches on a daily basis with our courier service. So we're really proud of being able to serve Benton and Franklin Counties, excluding the city of Richland, as well as the city of Othello we serve. Next slide. So this is a little snippet of what West Richland residents said was most important to them on our community needs assessment. We asked them 46 questions. It was quite lengthy. But we really wanted to understand the needs of the community, and they were not just library specific. So we asked a lot of them, you'll see, our basic needs. But we were really wanting to understand where could the library best serve the public moving forward. What I personally love to see is that there are two items that are specific to the libraries, digital materials and physical materials. And then, of course, a few different areas in which the library can be impactful on different families. I did note that the city of West Richland's survey that saved public spaces, recreational spaces was also very high on your survey as well. So love seeing, I mean, these are ones, as you can see, rate between the people who answered extremely important and very important, those put those up beyond 80% and above. So those were, again, the highest, most popular answers as things that were extremely important or very important to West Richland residents. Next slide. So with the data, we, in addition to creating a new mission statement, have created three strategic focuses, literacy, enrichment, and connection. And so you can see here the focuses that we are taking with those three areas. We are working with school districts to understand what their curriculum needs are so that we can be sure to be complimentary, enhancing what they are serving as well. And then, of course, enrichment's going to be our collection, our bread and butter. We are a very customer service driven library system. We are always sure to, if you put in a request for an item, we are very, very likely to purchase that item. And then connection, that's going to be the area in which we make sure that our staff are well aware of the resources that are offered by the many nonprofits in our community so that we have people who are coming into the branches who need basic services, basic needs, that we are able to connect them with those resources. Next slide. So same as last year, West Richland Library was our third busiest branch in a number of different domains. Each month, we see 11% of our active users using the West Richland Library, and that's about 2,000 people. Next slide. So 50% of all the checkouts from Mid Columbia Libraries take place for West Richland cardholders. And again, materials, reserves, usage, so many different domains, West Richland bubbles up as one of the top, or you know, the top three. After our Kennewick Library, which houses 40% of our collection, it's our largest library. And then Wes Pasco, Wes Pasco being a smaller branch, but it has that drive through, which is very highly utilized. Next slide. So every year, we put close to 50% of our total budget, we actually put 50% of our total revenue towards the collection. Again, we're very customer driven. We want to give our customers what they want to be reading and using. So this current year is one, almost close to $1.4 million. And then overall, our collection is worth 12 million. With at any given day, that $750,000 is housed at the West Richland Library. So next slide. So this is the visitation at our West Richland branch by people. From the 2021, you can see it, you know, jumped up by about 7,000 for the 2022 year. And this data for this current year of 2023 is only January through the end of July. So you can see that we are anticipating being close to 42,000 visits by the end of the year, which we are super happy to see. We're seeing that across the board. And we can see community is really rebounding back from COVID. Next slide. So we had over 640 people, West Richland residents, become new cardholders, which was a 37% increase from 2021. We also saw the average age about 40.5 years old. New cardholders was a lower at 29.8. So we love seeing that those younger readers engage with the library. And then, you know, we always have a high digital usage of our digital collection from West Richland residents, which over 1,200 are strictly digital users. Next slide. So here are some of the great programs that have taken place this calendar year. But again, with being able to have what felt like a really robust, very normal summer programming, we were loving and seeing programs within the library. Jason can speak to that in a little bit, but loving and seeing people back and revisiting the library and going back to normal habits. Next slide. So our program attendees alone, so that first slide was going to be people who are coming in using our, you know, counting them on the gate count. This is going to be people who are attending our programs. So 214 were in the small year of 2021 when things were reopened. 2022 is going to be over 4,700. And then this year to date, it's already at 50, over 5,600 people attending our programs. And again, I think Jason can, your library story times are very robust, very well participated. So you can hear more from him in a little bit. Next slide, please. So again, we just are wrapping up our summer reading program. Adults and children can turn in their reading logs from reading all summer and get prizes and different things. Next slide. To touch on the finances a little bit, the annual contract is about $562,000. And there's, the next slide will go into this a little bit more. But you can see, you know, through the indirect operating costs, the collection, capital expenditures, indirect operating costs, the value that we provide to the residents of West Richland far as who passes the annual contract amount because we are able to combine the finances across the board and make them a more, a system that is very well run, very leanly run, and offer more services to more individuals. Next slide. So this was provided per the contract to the, I think, Stephanie, but I'm sure she's sent it to the council as far as more transparency and what the direct operating costs are for operating that branch. And again, please interrupt me anytime if you have questions. Next slide. With the recent contract changes and it being the capita rate, the Mid Columbia Libraries is 29.54 per capita. West Richland by comparison is $42.16. Excuse me, what did I say? No, West Richland is on the range. Beg my pardon. But the Richland Public Library is going to be 42.16 cents. Next slide. So anyone here who would like a library card, if you don't already have one, you can sign up online through your phone number, your cell phone number. We have technology that checks your billing address, and then we are able to sign you up for an instant library card. If you want to check out physical collections, we invite you to come into the branch and bring paperwork that demonstrates that you are a resident, and we will get you set up with one. Next slide. Touching on some things that came up during COVID, but we continue to serve and find it of value to the public are going to be the curbside pickup. Also suggesting a title at the bottom of our website. You can go on there, as I mentioned, or no, actually, it's, anyway. On our website, you can go on and suggest a title if anyone would like that. I'll be happy to provide you the direct thread on our website. But also at the bottom of our website is Ask Librarian. So if you have trouble with your library card, if you have questions about pieces in the collection, if you want to add something to the collection, I encourage you to go to the very end of our website. It says Ask the Library. And Libby is going to be our overdrive for students. We offer that to all the school districts, excluding the city of Richland. But it does, we do serve it to the people who live in West Richland. Those students there. Canopy is going to be kind of like Netflix, but it's going to be a little more enriching, not quite that brain drain that sometimes can come alongside Netflix programming. But it's going to be much more enriching and much more thoughtful programming. Next slide. Here are two recent, well, one past event and then one upcoming event. We always are able to offer a library big read, and that's, that title is going to be open to all people who want to read. It's, you just go on our website and you check it out. There's no limit or max limitation on that. And then we are partnering with CBC, Barnes &amp; Noble, to be bringing in author V. E. Schwab. So that's upcoming as well at CBC. And at that time, you can do next slide, but I will turn it over to Jason. He's the one, I think, you took this photo, did you not?
I don't remember if I took that or Kathy took that.
On the screen.
Absolutely, yeah, that may have been. So thank you all for having us over. And I can't tell you how excited is, how excited I am to be part of West Richland's library. I've been with Mid Columbia Library for nine years now, two years at West Richland. And it is such a vibrant library. I think it reflects the city very well. We have been absolutely slammed with people. We are, our crafts for summer reading have been running out, but we have an experienced staff. Our staff is, I think Sheila and Kathy have been with us almost closing in on 20 years. I've been there 10, Lauren nine, I think, Max a month. So he's been there for a long time. We had one instance where we had expected about 30 people, and we had supplies for 35, and we ran out in 20 minutes. And because Kathy has a lot of experience, she whipped out a backup craft. And we ended up serving, I think, 70 kids that day. It's been extremely busy. I went over to Urban, Urban Range, the builders next door that took over the police department to apologize for taking over their parking so often. And one of the guys came out, he's like, I see people coming and going from there all day long. What are you doing there? I said, we do a lot of things. So one of the biggest focuses we want to have is effective programs. So we want to see programs where we have a story hour, where we have 30, 40, 50, 60 kids coming in. We want to see programming where National Night Out, we went out there and we had, I mean, we interacted with so much, so many people in the community. We want to avoid those programs where we try and think we have a slick idea and then five people show up. That's not worth our time, and it's not worth the citizen's time or tax dollars. So we're really focusing on that. And right now, it's working. We're doing really well. Just to give you a real quick idea, we had a goal of, I think, 1,050 or something, 58. It was 5% of the population at the time to participate in our summer reading challenge. And we surpassed that, I think, a month ago. And we're closing in on 1,200 participants right now. And our finisher rate, which is important because you can't just sign a bunch of people up, you actually want them to show up, is, I can't quite remember what it is, but it's very healthy. So we have a healthy community, and it shows in our library. We've got a lot of people coming in and we're focusing on. I will tell you that my biggest focus for the staff is get along with each other and give great customer service to people when they come in. I want to feel like they're welcome and that they're, that the staff is excited to see them. And we're doing that. We're doing really well. Final thought, I wanted to thank Chief Grego and his people. We have had some issues over the, about a year ago, we were having some issues with people coming into the bathroom and things. I had to chase people out. And I think in the last four months, we have had zero problems. So I think that speaks to some of the work you've done, some of the work we've done. We're doing really well. So thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Swan and Mr. Bond. Appreciate the presentation. It's, uh, it's great to hear that the usage of the library continues to go up. From what I hear of citizens here in West Richland, they really enjoy the diversity of programs that you offer there. I'll now ask if any council members have any questions. Councilmember Bloom.
What, I mean, your focus area is literacy, enrichment, connection. What, what are you doing for literacy? I mean, I, I can, there are a lot of draws for people that know how to read or read well. What are you doing for those that don't or encouraging?
So I think we all saw the recent, or a couple of months ago, where it was like literary, literacy scores have slid back like 30 years to be to the point where it's pretty depressing. And so our director of programs is also, has a master's in education in addition to a master of library and information science. So we are weaving in literacy components to every story time, everything, so that we're making sure that it's not just coming in and listening to a story and having that. Not that that's not powerful, but we are, every activity, all, everything that we are doing that's public facing is going to be especially geared towards young kids, these, those activities specifically, but making sure that we are in interweaving a lot of those literacy components so that they are walking away with literacy skills and whatnot.
So for the crafts, there would be some focus on literacy and in the crafting?
Yeah, fine motor skills, even, you know, science and math as well, numeracy, that we're able to weave all those things into different activities that not, wouldn't necessarily on plain sight look to be, but there's a lot of intentionality behind it.
One of the things, one of the things we did do this summer with our summer reading challenges, every Thursday morning, we have a children's reading hour. And we decided to attach the summer reading preschool craft to that, to connect that. The other thing that we do is we will have parents come in. We sort of a lot of homeschoolers and we get, you know, you always know one of them because they've got a giant bag with them. And we'll talk with them about how to get kids to love books. And so one of the examples is we'll have a parent who is taking a board book away from a child. And we'll say, no, those are meant to be obliterated because kids need to start seeing that it's something they can play with and work with. And then we'll also talk to them during story hour about how at home, it's a great idea to do this and to do that so that they can start learning. Because, because to come once a week to a story hour is a great thing. But if we can help parents understand a little bit more effectively reading at home and how to, how to amp up their child's learning while they're reading at home, it's a huge factor. And again, we have a team come in and we get just the right recommendation for that person with care so that they end up with something that's age appropriate and that is something they can enjoy and feel excited about so they don't get bored at 13 years old. Also, an example of our efforts is going to the elementary schools. Each staff member had an elementary school they owned this year. That was one thing I set up, you know, Sheila owned, oh, I can't remember what they own now. I know Kathy owned Tap Teal because all these kids kept coming in the library. I remember you from Tap Teal. So when we go to the schools, we help get the kids excited about the library because coming in during the summer is critical to fight that summer slide where they, a lot of kids don't read. So those are some of the efforts we're doing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smart?
Oh, yeah. So I had a question about messaging and your decision process on how you select the messages and the readings that you provide to the children of our community. And the second part is you constantly are renewing your collection with new books. I presume some of them are old new books and some of them are new new books. And you're buying quite a few, 1.4 million or thereabouts. What do you do with the old books? You obviously run out of storage. They're not going away, evaporating. What happens to all of those? Do they go to other libraries? So two-part question, messaging, how do you decide what to feed our children? And, and what happens to the older books?
So instead of mincing words, I'll be happy to send you the policy that we have on like story times and how we decide on what's put forth for that. As far as weeding of the collection, so when things have been checked out, and this is a physical collection, when they've been checked out a number of times, when they are seeing a little bit of wear and tear, we sell them to our friends at the library for a very nominal fee, and then they sell them at their giant sale. And that is a way that we are able to then purchase prizes and different things that we are not able to do with tax-free dollars. Yeah, so we don't waste them. They get put back out in the community. Teachers come for their, you know, libraries. We have homeschoolers come. And so, yeah, there's actually a Friends of the Library sale at the end of September. So I encourage you to come and find all the books you can have to your heart's content.
Quick follow-up, so when you buy new books, you said that you take requests and they usually go through?
Yes.
What percentage of the new materials that you acquire, do you think roughly, are by request versus ones that you just have on a purchase list? And where do you get that purchase list?
Right, so we have a collection department that has four people with a master's of library and information science. They're collection librarians. So they each kind of own a certain portion of, you know, say, nonfiction or whatnot. And so they are on top, they're monitoring the usage of what's been popular. They are looking, overdrive or different publishers offer, you know, new and current lists, but they are those kind of experts in their, in their field, and they're kind of always monitoring the collection and what's new. And I can't remember the name of what they call like the core collection, which are always things that we're going to have in the collection. Can I answer it all? I feel like I'm missing a component.
So it's sort of statistics driven by popular use, sounds like.
Yeah.
And then, and then local requests, though.
I will get that data for me from our collection.
Not, not crazy. I just didn't know if you knew if it was like 5% or 50%, you know, interesting.
Well, if you're a homeschool parent, it's very.
I suppose so, right?
Very specialized, no. All right. But I will get that.
And I can appreciate that too, by the way. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Jason. Appreciate your time. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Moran.
Thank you very much. First off, I just want to say I, every time I pass by the library when it's open, I see tons of cars. So I can just tell that the library is doing an amazing job. So thank you for that. And it sounds like most of the staff there is fairly well educated and it really sometimes seems like they need to be, especially with the things that the library is doing more and more with the masters in education and whatnot. So thank you for that. I'm wondering, is there, how is staffing doing? Are we doing good with staffing? Do we have any openings?
I mean, Jason is newly, I'm in my master's program right now. Jason has just finished. So our newest librarian right here.
So as far as West Richland staffing, so again, we have a very experienced staff. They've been around a long time. They are extremely dedicated to the mission of the library. I've been, so they saved me. The first two, I showed up. I have, I have a background in tech management. So I started off at Hewlett Packard a long time ago, ended up working for W. O. Goran Associates and Manufacturing in Flagstaff, Arizona. And I knew library work from Kennewick. I'd been at Kennewick for seven years before I came to West Richland. I shifted gears to libraries because of the community impact. I have my MBA from the University of Colorado, followed it up with the MIAAS with San Jose State. But specifically Lauren, Sheila, and Kathy, their commitment, they just came in and said, Jason, we've got to do this, we've got to do this, we've got to do this, we've got to think about this. They were on it all the time, and I just kind of followed their lead and got obstacles out of their way. So they are dedicated staff. They're doing really well. Max is new simply because we had one person go off to follow her bachelor's degree at WSU. And then another person came through, and then she had a life issue where she had to go. And so Max has showed up with us. He's a former, or she has his master's in education as well. So we're attracting some really quality people, and he's doing great. And we're enjoying the challenge of keeping up with the kids. It's some days I'm standing in a sea of kids and I kind of have to get a little lower, so I'm not too tall around them. But it's, I think we're doing great.
Thank you very much.
All right, there are no more questions. Thank you once again, Sarah. Thank you, Jason. A council, we have the consent agenda before us. Consent agenda consists of payment of the bills, approved minutes from the regular meeting of July 18, 2023, and workshops on July 25 and August 8, 2023. Ordinance 16-23, amending the West Richland Municipal Code 10.08 relating to speed limit on Keene Road. Resolution 50-23, authorizing adoption of a proclamation proclaiming September as attendance matters month. Resolution 51-23, authorizing adoption of a proclamation proclaiming September 17 to the 23rd, 2023 as Constitution Week. Resolution 52-23, authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with the city of Seattle regarding Washington State Reference Network. And a motion authorizing the mayor to execute engineering services contract with RH2 for design of sewer lift station upgrades. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment on these seven items on the consent agenda? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, is there anyone attending virtually that would like to comment? And it doesn't appear we have anyone attending virtually. Do you see anyone, Stephanie?
I do, I do not, no.
Okay. With no comment, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 There says aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. This is our first citizen public comment period, and it's the first opportunity for citizens with items not on the agenda. If you wish to provide comments, I ask that you please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Please remember the council is not able to respond to questions that you may pose during your comment period. Is there anyone that wishes to make a public comment? And seeing no one, and it doesn't appear that we have anyone attending virtually either. Do you see anyone, Stephanie?
I do not.
All right. Seeing no one, we'll move on to ordinance as resolution motions and public hearings. First public hearing is amending West Richland Municipal Code 17.13.020 to allow event centers in the RL40 zone as a conditional use. Items 8A and 8B are a public hearing and an ordinance to amend the West Richland Municipal Code to allow event centers in the RL40 zone as a conditional use. Planner Alicia Ransom will present the staff report. Thank you, Ms. Ransom.
Hello, good evening. This is a, is a applicant generated request for a text amendment. The applicant, Randall Wally, submitted an application to propose a zoning code text amendment to West Richland Municipal Code 17.13.020, which is the commercial land use, excuse me, the residential land use matrix to allow event centers in the RL40 zone as a conditional use. The proposed amendment would also add a definition for event center, comma, commercial to WRMC 17.09.060E definitions. The, the definition is included in the draft ordinance that's included in the packet. Additionally, there Additionally, there would be some performance standards for event centers added to the low density residential chapter of Title 17 that's found in 17.24.060. Everything that's being proposed is in the ordinance. The the applicant submitted this text amendment in order to use his property as an event center. We met with Mr. Wally and discussed several different options of how he could accomplish this goal that they wanted to use their property for. We discussed a comprehensive plan amendment. Ultimately, that would could potentially be a spot zone with just the portion of property being rezoned to a commercial use where the surrounding properties are RL40. So it would be inconsistent with the surrounding properties to do a comprehensive plan amendment. That process is also lengthy and has a little bit more of unpredictability. We recommended a text amendment to allow this and then allowing it as a conditional use to have a little bit more mitigation built into the process to place conditions to mitigate any impacts on surrounding properties, looking at things like what, you know, is there high water table issue, sorry, high groundwater issues, like because the majority of the properties zoned RL40 within the city are within section six and section eight. There does get into some of that high groundwater issue. The with the discussions, we decided to, as staff, put forward a 10 acre minimum for allowing a property to be used as an event center in the RL40 zone that would be able to accommodate all the necessary facilities on site, including restrooms, event spaces, offsite parking, excuse me, off street parking, and would minimize noise impacts, other impacts on surrounding properties. Bless you. The, again, the majority of parcels located in the RL40 zone are within section six, section eight. They're those two and a half acre parcels. So this would be out of reach for most parcels as existing in the RL40 zone. Councilmember Bloom did bring forward, I believe it was four parcels that were that were able to do this as currently constituted. That could change going on into the planning commission discussion and recommendation of this. We did have a resident bring up a concern that somebody could combine parcels to create a 10 acre parcel in order to do this, and it would meet the minimum lot size that would be required and again, have enough space to accommodate all the needs for this and also mitigate some of the effects on surrounding property owners with the parcel of that size. If somebody chose to do that. Public notice was sent out in regards to this public hearing that was sent out on July 3. And we received a number of no comment responses from utility agencies and no public comments via written comment. We did receive two comments during the July 13th Planning Commission meeting. One was in favor and we, I talked about previously the concern with the conditional use and somebody combining parcels to create a 10 acre parcel to do this in the middle of section six or section eight. There was additionally, the resident brought up concerns with conditional use permits and how they can be, they can be difficult to process. The conditional use permit in the past, especially in the RL40 zone, has been contentious. But that is the best way that we've found to notify surrounding property owners that, you know, something is coming. There has been an application made that they have the opportunity to comment on that. And that's being taken into account for conditions that are placed onto the proposed use. The again, well, the proposed text amendment received a CUP determination of nonsignificance on June 26, 2023. And the city received no comment responses from Zipley and KID. The planning commission at their meeting on July 13, they did recommend that council approve the proposed text amendment. The council has the opportunity to make modifications to the code that would allow event centers in the RL40 zone, additional performance standards, other modifications to the definition, things of that nature, or they have the opportunity to deny the proposed text amendment and keep the code as written. Staff also recommends that the council approve the proposed text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ransom. I will now open the public hearing at 6:36 PM. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to come up to the podium and make a comment, please limit your comments to three minutes. You may approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please. Is there anyone present here tonight that would like to make a comment?
Dan Ritchie, 508 Austin Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm very familiar with this particular parcel. I'm very familiar with the family that owns it. Three generations, I believe, live there now. I've known four of them, four generations that have lived on that property. It's a prime property for what they're proposing to do down there. It's bordered on three sides by the Yakima River. Noise should not be an issue down there. The family is, has been good friends of mine. And there's no doubt in my mind that they'll be good business partners with the city of West Richland as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Randy Wally. I'm the one that has put this forward. So I appreciate the time tonight. And I really appreciate all your due diligence, trying to get through all this paperwork. You did a great job. As Dan said, the family has been here a long time. I'm actually in the house that I grew up in. My son is in the house. So he's third generation's in that house. We've been in this property since 1957. It has been a working farm. It is a working farm. But as economics and stuff have changed over time and, you know, I just recently retired from Local 598 as their business manager. So I have a lot of business, community ties, nonprofits. And this is, my wife also just recently retired from Energy Northwest. So our involvement in the community has been vast over the years. And this is not just a money business for the family, although economically it will certainly help us keep the family farm in play. As everybody knows, economics for farms, especially farms, small farms, is not really great anymore. So this is a financial thing for the family, but besides that, for us, being part of the community, we want to use it. And we have voiced our concerns to support a lot of the nonprofits that are already in. You know, I am the chairman of the Bikes for Types program throughout the community. Goes with the read a book program in your libraries, your police force, all those kinds of things. And we have voiced the concern that this facility will help support all those nonprofits as as we can also. So it's not just strictly a business for us, but it is a business, we think, that's positive for the community. And I think it's a really good positive thing for the city of West Richland to bring those type of business leaders and participants from the community to our town. And I think where we're at, we're down there all by ourselves. You know, we have no neighbors. And I don't think there's anybody that we can see that we're going to put off in doing what we're doing here. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to comment?
And mine is more about procedural. Randy, like you said, in the community forever.
Would you please introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry, Gail Brown, 4405 Chelan Drive. In my opinion, this should have been a zone change, not a CUP. I think it opens it up for your RL40s. Whether this stays on the south side, somebody will come up on the north side and want it. And the city will do it because it's not, you won't be able to fight it. These properties have come up before. It's, you know, 100, the 100 year old flood plain, is it, isn't it? So I think as a zone change would have answered a lot more questions than what we're seeing here with the conditional use permit. In addition, these older neighborhoods and you've got three blocks of residential, and then you've got multifamily, and then you've got mixed use. But what the, it's, it's high density and there's a lot of kids and you don't have sidewalks. A couple you do, and the code enforcement is just non-existent. So even though 46 is a pretty wide street, there's, you've got three foot weeds or tack weeds and there's no separation for these kids. Balance the same way. You just don't have any separation for these kids. And you're adding a lot of activities and traffic, not to mention the city traffic that's increasing to the sewer. So what do I got? Oh, yeah, the lines. That's, and you have this on the next thing is water efficiency. We postponed the water replacements due to cost and wanting to increase the project and add 46. I haven't seen that done. And so I don't know if they're going to postpone it to the next budget cycle again. But I'm curious to know what that's going to do, add to the condition of the roads that we're adding more traffic on. So it is an older neighborhood. I didn't hear the librarian go and use in the bathroom. We've got homeless guys down there at the river with those trees of heaven. You can't see them. There's property for sale down there that goes into the swamp. I don't understand that. But something's got to be done about cleaning up these neighborhoods and adding this commercial property. I mean, there's got to be a happy medium. And I think the planning is what's lacking here. And it has been in these areas for a long time. 25 years of giving lip service to these older neighborhoods about doing something we have done nothing except, you know, we're going to connect to underserved communities down here. And it was basically put in a grant to help with scores. So that's my two cents. And and nothing against you. It's procedural in the most part. I think that that's what that's set up. It's probably going to move to a commercial. But if you could plan it so that we could keep the kids safe and the pedestrians safe, you're getting a lot more of that. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to comment?
Coranza, Lot 91, Section 6. Thank you. The applicant in the ordinance I was reading, she shouldn't have a personal name in ordinance. I would appreciate if you'd change Wally, whatever his name is, to the applicant. It's in the first paragraph. Number two, RCW 35A 12.130, no ordinance shall consist of more than one subject, and that must be clearly expressed in the title. I am so many things on this ordinance. You're amending, you're creating. It's not one thing. Public knowledge regarding diminished real estate would cause a likelihood of decreased price. If I'm living someplace and someone comes in to buy my property, they're not going to want to buy a commercial piece of property next to a residential. I've got a perfect view of from like the sea reactor out here all the way to the blues. I'm not very high elevated. Am I like at, what, 560 feet? Well, I used, I think, about 320 feet. I'm looking down at that area at night. I get bombarded from all the lights from the sewage plants. I don't even need to turn my electricity on. Check with the REA. My bill is like this. Sound harmonics. I can have my doors and windows closed. I can hear the flat top park ding, 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 all night long of the sidewalk. I can hear the generators, that high pitch when I stop at the street sign on bombing in Van Giefen. My windows are down. There's a very high sound that comes out there. I get that. The harmonics are, were just like air that bombs and it travels. I can hear, be in my house. I'm between me and the BLM land and columns. People can be talking over there. I can hear them talk. That's the sounds. Several years ago, you got to get a cup for Mr. Hamilton. Now it runs with the land and it's forever. And I'm the one probably the closest to him. I get the barking dogs. He doesn't do much business anymore. It's kind of whatever. It's an eyesore. Wasn't this thing wasn't done completely. And I do not want to see a perpetual cup in a residential area. Some of us would like to stay in our homes for a while and not have to be forced to move. And the other thing I have to say is a lot of those items on the cup, they're singly individually listed. Are you going to deplete all of those? Because now they're all going to be in this new one that you're proposing because park and ride facilities, wine tasting rooms, sales, recreation camps, outdoor concerts, the temporary seasonal outdoor public markets, food vending vehicles. Would you not have these at a public area? You can bring it. It just isn't going to work. And then, yeah. The dust, the noise, the smoke. I guess I would say the same thing I did to Mr. Hamilton. If you want something, go find a piece of property. It's me years to find a piece of property I'm at. And I just need to be staying there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy Penisco, still at 901 Bombing Range Road. So staff has determined that this is an issue of nonsignificance. I disagree. It's of great significance. Okay, so what you're doing right now was before you're here tonight, it's going to allow a commercial use in a residential zone, which you're basically changing a zone. You're really changing a zone. Okay, so now you didn't notify, well, I didn't get noticed and I'm in an RL zone. I don't believe you notified the people down there. So it just doesn't work, you guys. We've been this route before. Anyway, so if you go for this change, it's a change in quality of life for these people who live down here. So we have property down there. We already have the sewer treatment plant for people to deal with, right? And now you want to bring this in. So right now they can go out on their patio and just enjoy the nightlife, the unlit skies, which some of you have been here before the council, championing for this nice quality of life in West Richland. And then you put that in there. It, it just doesn't work to add commercial uses in residential areas. And CUPs especially. So some of you were here when we did the dog kennel. What happened? Thought we could, we could put conditions on him, right? He goes to court. No, you can't do that. You automatically, when you put a CUP use in there, it's granted. It's granted. You just should not be doing that. So just because RL40 lots are big and we have low density is not a reason to think they're good for commercial development. Sound travels. I can hear people two lots away, sitting on their porch, talking. Seriously. I can hear flat top park and all that goes with it. And I can hear words when they have microphones. But listen, that's a community use. That, that benefits everybody, right? So, but when you do the CUPs, that, that, that doesn't work. It doesn't blend. We have residential neighborhoods that have businesses at home. That works because it doesn't interfere with anybody. You can live next door to somebody you don't even know they have a business. So we allow those. That's good. So the subdivision down there is pretty much made up of mobile homes. Some manufactured homes. They are not well insulated. Many of them older homes. And they deserve to have the quality of life that everybody else does in West Richland. Not listen to certain music. I get it all the way from the chicken shack. And everybody doesn't enjoy the same kind of music. It gets off at 10 o'clock at night, but there are older people in West Richland now. We're a retirement community. We don't really need to have listening to, listening to that. So in our big areas, nothing to absorb the sound, you guys. No trees, no buildings, no structures, anything like that. So it just goes up Bombing Range Road. Nothing to absorb the sound, you guys. No trees, no buildings, no structures, anything like that. So it just goes up bombing range road. And these people that live down there in that development, Shalane Drive, Arlington in that area, that's just not fair to them to do that. So. I'm going to ask you to deny this tonight. If the online county records are correct. The applicant owns land. In the county that he can go apply for a conditional use permit. Well, I'm sorry. No, the county says he can go and it does have to condition you. County told me he can go apply for a building permit. So this is in urban growth area. So I don't know what you planned for this area. But if you do that, I mean, so he does this, it opens the door to maybe the city absorbing. That area and now you have an area that really is. Commercial, live industrial, something that doesn't affect us, that doesn't affect the residents. So, you know, as a fifty-year-old resident of West Richland, I've been over all over this town. As a volunteer volunteering for different things. And I'm going to tell you from. The north side of Van Geeson, from the bridge to Luana Estates to the Brotherhood. All I hear is West Richland doesn't care about us. They only care about the other side of the road and going up bombing range road. Tonight you ought to show them that you really care for about them and their quality of life. This is not a have to situation. CUPs are very bad. They get us in trouble. Taxpayer monies go into the, all these lawsuits on them. It doesn't work. We're living it. Commercial uses do not work, you guys. It's affecting us. And it runs with the land. So guess what? We're faced with that forever. Forever. They shouldn't even run with the land, but we are. It's pretty easy for you tonight. Simply keep residential uses and residential uses and commercial, commercial uses and commercial and, you know, those other areas. It's easy. Keep it simple. Keep it simple, like we did in the olden days. We never had court cases. We never had people coming in and filing lawsuits. So I'm going to ask you tonight, do what, what you would do for your own property and just keep your property residential. Keep our property residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to comment? Seeing no one, uh, is there anyone virtually that would care to comment? And Stephanie, I do not see anyone virtually. Do you?
Uh, I do not.
Seeing no one virtually, I will. Uh, no, not at this time, Mr. Wally. Um, I will close the public hearing at six fifty-two P M. Counsel. Uh, we're looking at amending West Richland Municipal Code seventeen dot thirteen dot zero two zero to allow event centers in RL forty zone as a conditional use. Do I have a motion?
Uh, I move to approve ordinance seventeen dash two-three. To approve the proposed text amendment file number TXT dash zero zero five dash twenty twenty-three. To allow event centers as a conditional use in the RL forty zone on parcels larger than ten acres.
I would like to second that.
I have a motion and a second from Councilmember Hayes. Counsel, questions or discussion that has not been covered yet? I'll start with Ms. Moran.
Thank you very much. Um, I am wondering, there was something that, uh, one of the speakers had mentioned about a flood zone. Uh, do we know whether or not this is in a flood zone?
We did look into this when we initially started meeting with Mr. Wally about. You know, is this in the floodway? Is it in the flood zone? Um, it's outside of the no build area. I'm trying to remember.
I can answer that. So I looked at the FEMA flood maps just today. Uh, the property and again, I want to just clarify that this isn't looking at. This as a project, this is a text amendment. So I want to make sure we're not blurring lines here. Um. But the property is in the five hundred year flood. So it's not even the hundred year flood, which is the typically the locations that get inundated. Typically every ten years or so, uh, the five hundred year flood is above that. So that's what the firm maps, um, the FEMA firm maps indicated.
Um, and I I do want to say that, uh, I. I hear and I have heard and I've received emails from folks and I appreciate all of the emails. Thank you very much for everybody that has sent in emails. And I understand that this would be a huge benefit to West Richland and to, uh, the family as well. I do, however, also have concerns, um, because I have mentioned it before, as others have, where. North of Van Geeson does tend to be. Um, I don't want to say an afterthought because that makes it seem too on purpose, uh, and too negative, but I am concerned with. The noise. I am concerned with it being a CUP that, uh, it could be anywhere that there is ten acres put together. And I'm concerned with the ability to have all of that traffic on some of these roads, especially north of Van Geeson. Um, and without the sidewalk. So I'm wondering if there would be a way to. Look at it instead of being a CUP, being a specific zone change. I feel like that might be the best way because there are so much RL forty. I'm concerned that. Somebody could easily put. You know, four two-point-five acre lots together to create ten acres. And while I think it would be great to have more event centers, I do think that having it so close to residential, even with. Some sound barriers, I, we hear all the time about Chicken Shack. And we hear sometimes about Flat Top and about the racetrack. I just am really concerned with having it. Where we will, if we don't have residential there right now, we will in the future. Um, and if we were to make it a CUP with the concerns as mentioned before, where there might be the L word. Lawsuit, um, included when. People are saying, well, we shouldn't have to do all of these extra things if other places aren't required to. I've, I am wondering. If we could make this zone change and how much time would be required to go about that route instead. I know that was long, sorry.
So it would be a comprehensive plan amendment. We take comprehensive plan amendments once a year, as you know. Um, that would require them to prepare a package, you know, applying for that change, but then it's not. The concern was spot zoning. That is what got brought up. Um. It's a small parcel surrounded by RL forty. It would, it would be very difficult for them to justify that portion of the comprehensive plan amendment. Package because they do ask them specifically to address spot zoning. And it would be specifically to benefit this property owner. And wouldn't really be a benefit to surrounding property owners.
So, and and that does actually bring up something interesting. You said it wouldn't be a benefit to property owners.
To change the zone.
Right, right, right. To change the zone, but I'm wondering, you know, are we looking at it? Where if it was in other areas, how well it would benefit. And again. Also going back to even like the water, do we have the ability to cover the water if that were to be an event center there or anywhere? In RL forty, if we might add an event center.
They would have to provide that. It would be. Specific to that use. They would have to provide that as a report as part of the conditional use permit application.
Would that be legally okay to require them to do that?
We can, specifically with the SEPA, we can require them to produce reports to, um. Show impacts on, and it's all to serve making that decision and determining those mitigation measures.
Okay, I I I, again, I will say, and it just is unfortunate. It's where it is. If it were further out, I would say, you know, this sounds great. It just where it is right now. I mean, between the chicken shack. It, there is a lot going on north of Van Geeson where there are residents that do feel left like. Out a little bit. When it comes to noise, when it comes to lack of sidewalks, things like that. Um, so I I have concerns about changing it for this.
Councilmember Bloom.
Um. Just for clarification. This property is not surrounded by RL forty. It has RL forty on adjacent to it and on the other side it is county agricultural. Is that not correct?
Forgive me, I did not look at county zoning because that's not my job.
Right, but it's on the edge of the county and. Mr. Wally owns the property that's over there and I possibly he would know what is his own, but it's being used agricultural. So for the city to consider it quote spot zoning. And spot zoning has not just simply the aspect of it being all by itself. But there are areas that are on the edge of another one. That we change zones. And so spot zoning is not necessarily. Uh, applicable in this case. Uh, but. Adjacent to it is a large parcel which is owned RL forty. Owned by Ms. Markham, I assume, still. Um, and in discussions I had with her years ago. Um, event center was what I suggested her to have there. Um. And my exchange with, uh. With the city on possibly adding another condition. Um, or what do we call it? We call it, um.
Be a performance.
Standard. Uh, which would alleviate the problem for section six, section eight. Of adding a performance standard which says that this is not within a thousand feet of another residence. Would eliminate. Most of, all of section six and and eight. The two other properties that are RL forty, uh, one is near, um, Desert View. And the other is on the other side of Flat Top, on the downside of the Flat Top. And if somebody can. If if they're mountain goats, they could probably put one in there. Uh, but it would, it would open it up to Ms. Markham's property to put an event center, but it would. It would require it be a little bit further out. Uh, my second concern though, which was expressed is the traffic issue. Uh, the road out forty, forty-sixth avenue is not the best of roads. Um. So, um. But I'm not quite sure how much, but I do agree that is a great place. I've I've visited, I've gone out there over the years and. And at awe of that property location on the river. Um. So I I'm, I'm perplexed. I I believe we can do it as a zoning change and protect most of the cities from. You know, limited to that chunk of RL forty out there, which would open it up to the Markhams as well as Wally's. Um, by putting a restriction that it's not within a thousand feet of a. Of a residence. Excluding the property itself, uh, but that's beside the point. Oh, well, this is a text amendment to the zone. Oh, I'm, I meant I changed the zoning conditional use. Um, and I don't think it's overly restrictive, but it's, it takes into consideration the staff report that says. We don't want it in section six, section eight. And and I think that's, that's true. And I understand the. The aspect of development, you know, of underdevelopment of the area on the other side of Van Geeson. But possibly by bringing this in and actually developing that, that marsh area out there. Uh, would, would benefit it. And. You know, much more than trying to build, I think we've looked at what was outside the hundred year floodplain over there on the Markham property. She could get maybe eight properties that were outside the floodplain. Um, you know. Things can flood all the time and be an event center. So, um. I, you know, I would suggest we, we add a restriction as far as the distance to a, to a residential property to this proposal.
Councilmember Smart.
Yeah, I really like what Councilmember Brown said. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, Bloom. Sorry. She's not here anymore. She's just in the audience. Um. So, yeah, I, 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 I would like to see a path forward for. This family to, um. To, 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 to engage in this activity, use their land as they wish. Um, I am sensitive to protecting nearby residential properties and I do have a hard. Time with speculation. On how, uh. RL forty properties will be purchased and used in the, in the future. And I certainly also agree with, um. One of our, uh. Residents comments about how difficult it is to, to, uh. Not grant a conditional use. When it's brought before the council, um, and and the prospect of. You know, going to court to fight that battle. That, that just seemed, I mean, we went through that. And I I don't want to create conditions that that cause that again. Um. So I guess I should ask, the question would be. Um, you know, obviously there was some analysis of alternatives. Um, you know, I've talked to Mr. Menon Hall and, um. Heard, you know, both sides of this. I, I, I fail to see that there's not a good solution. Um. And I think that what Mr. Bloom pointed out, I want to ask, I mean, was there some, a, uh. Was there some. Analysis of that alternative of granting, uh, a, a conditional use that requires, you know, a thousand foot offset. Or something of that nature? Or is that even a possibility? Can you guys answer that question? Is that something we should be considering?
In terms of whether or not legally we can do that, I'm unsure.
Oh. Um. Yes, you can require, it would be an amendment to the motion to include the, that requirement that it's not within a thousand. Feet of another residence. Um, so you could do that. That's not a problem. We didn't analyze it before because as I was looking at this, I thought, well. And I want to clarify, a conditional use permit. Is an allowed use with conditions. Conditions can be cost prohibitive, and this is something that I talked with, with John and others about. Um, for instance, if they were to locate in a high groundwater table area, they would have to do a hydraulic analysis to show that it's. Not going to impact the groundwater. And if it did, would there be mitigation that would, could be satisfied to deal with that? My assumption would be is to do something of that nature because event center sites are well vegetated and and maintained. Um, that that would be fairly cost prohibitive. As far as the roadway goes, if it was located in section six, I'd want to make sure that there was, uh, paved access to the site. Um, which depending on the location could also be a cost prohibitive mitigation requirement. Um, and it's not saying that we're trying to. Damn projects. It's just that these are some of the mitigation measures that we would be contemplating and looking at depending on the location. Uh, if it was located in section eight, I don't know that there would be something over there that might. Create a cost prohibitive situation, not, um. But from my experience with these event centers, um, I actually went to a wedding on Saturday night. In Pasco to, uh, cite those five acres, um, and they had parking on site. They had a lot of nice vegetation. They had. Loud music going on toward the end of the festivities, but then at ten o'clock. Everything shut down and that was a hard stop for, for the event. Um, which would comply with our noise ordinance, uh, that we have in place. So there's, there's considerations for all of those. Uh, but to answer your question, John, yes, we could, it could be amended if council so choose to amend the motion to include that requirement.
So, um, I, maybe I missed it, but was there a map in the packet that shows what property we're talking about exactly?
No, because this is not a project application. This is a zoning code text amendment. The conditional use permit would have that. Uh, but it would go to the planning commission and not the council.
Yeah. And so a lot of the comments tonight have talked about. Property owned by a certain individual that's very close to residential parcels. But when I. But when I looked at the county map, that looks like it's county property. I I I only see, I was only able to find. One or well, maybe one parcel within city limits that was owned by the applicant. And it's like a half a mile away. Am I? I just need some guidance here because I'm not sure. Where the concern is coming from because the property that owns that's in within city limits owned by the applicant is. Is like a half a mile away from the next nearest at residence unless you want to jump across the river and go to Richland. So I I don't understand some of those comments and I'm not saying they're not valid. I'm just saying and and I know that they would be valid. For future uses of other RL forty properties, which I also live on RL forty property and. And when you say there's expenses associated with buying. Uh, you know, four, two and a half acre parcels and doing groundwater. I'm going like, yeah, unless you're Marriott. Or somebody and and then it's just a drop in the bucket and there are even local residents in this community who could. Drop a million bucks at in a blink of an eye and and it's not a big deal to them. So that's a nice argument, but. I don't really see it being a permanent argument. It's an argument for today, not much of an argument for 10 years from now. So I. I want to acknowledge that. I know that uh some of our commenters have 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 implied that. And that's something that we need to be considering as a council, right? It's not, this is not a temporary change. This is a permanent change. So. I think that with a um. With an addition of a condition built into it like, you know, a thousand foot distance or something like that to the nearest residents. He would do a couple of things in case my mapping is wrong and the applicant wants to use one of his properties which are. Adjacent to looks like some residential parcels um that that might be prohibited in that location. But that he could easily use some of this other property that's farther north without any issues whatsoever. And not to mention all the county property that's evidently owned by the ranch as well. So um, I. I think there's an opportunity there for a decent compromise. Um, but I I also think that. That that pro- that kind of a change probably had not ought to be made at a council meeting. Um, I'll just bring this up. I mean, I think that if somebody's going to put some sort of distance. Requirement on such a conditional use. But this this requires some real thought. I mean, I would want to be. On a desk with a map and a ruler and a scale and I would want to really look at that myself before I just like. Flippantly said, hey, let's put a thousand foot barrier between, you know, any future uh event center and and a residence. Um, I know we we so we have a 10 acre requirement now. That looks good today, might not look so good five years from now. Um. So I those are, those are just some comments I have. I I think I, like I said, I want to, I want to characterize this with one certainty is that is that. If if the applicant is interested in putting uh a uh. Event center on the parcel which I thought he was interested in, which is within city limits. I think it's a great location. I mean, matter of fact, I don't think there's a better location than the Tri-Cities. Uh, I mean, that piece of property is surrounded by the Akamar River on most sides and there's absolutely nothing for a half a mile. I mean, I want, I would, if I haven't spoke with the applicants, I don't really know which property he's thinking of, but that's the one I see within the city limits. So. You know, but but I don't want his business opportunities to negatively impact. All the rest of the RL forty properties, both now and into the future. There's nothing that says that in the future. Given all of the whatever it is, 15 square miles of property we have yet to develop in the city. Um, that we won't have some more RL forty properties designated in those areas. So I I but and I'm very sensitive to the impact of an event center to neighbors. So I've repeated myself like three times, so I should probably stop there, but I I I'm not, I'm not against. The applicant's plans as far as I can discern them. Um, I I am very cautious about. Doing what others council members have said, which is negatively impacting all the rest. So I think there's probably a better approach. Or maybe a more careful approach or maybe an approach that has that additional condition which would alleviate. The concerns that have really been brought up by most of the commenters and the council members here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smart. Uh, before I go to you, Councilmember Bloom, I'll go down the line here, but. Uh, I'll just add my comments uh right now. Um, I had a conversation with Mr. Mendenhall uh on Monday yesterday. I think for about 15 minutes or so, posed a number of questions to him. Um, he answered uh my questions uh very well, in my opinion. However, um, tonight, uh, some what I view as significant concerns have been raised uh by my fellow council members. Uh, and also by members of the public that have been attending tonight. I too believe individuals should be able to use their land as they see fit uh within the uh guidance that they do not impact. Neighbors uh negatively. Um, and I, so the way the text amendment is written tonight. I'm not convinced that I can support it at the present time and would recommend, at least from my standpoint. That it be returned to staff and or the planning commission uh to see if we can come up with a solution. Because I see some long term, potential long term concerns as pointed out by some of my fellow council members. So I'm very reticent. I I'll just state this right now, very reticent to vote in favor of it, but I'm going to let Councilmember Hayes speak next.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, can we get some clarity on? I know it's 200 acres. So where is it located where the uh event center is going to be at? Is it on the property that? Um, John was talking about on the. Where exactly is it located?
I mean, it's tricky because we're not talking about a specific property tonight. Um, okay, but it is the northernmost property in this, well, not northernmost, but on that little. Peninsula up north of the golf course. It is the northern northernmost property in the city.
Could I ask Eric to please speak on some of these issues that were brought up that to clarify too, to help clarify? This or not, can you, are you able to do that?
Well, I think I've spoken to many of the discussion points that were brought up. One thing I do want to maybe suggest is that council. Um, have staff take this back, work in some language to add a thousand foot buffer. To the performance standards for this type of use in the RL forty zone. Um, and then bring it back at the next council meeting for action. Uh, that way you're not ginning up some performance standards as council members, but we're able to go back and and do that as planning professionals to create some. Legal standard that could be applied across the board and and be able to be held up in. A planning commission meeting, hearing, or also in a court of law.
Mister, did you have additional comments?
Yes, uh, my additional comment is that there are also some. Donut holes in the city that would could come over as RL forty in in them, you know, basically. Which which and and there could be some as we develop the ranch, there could be RL forty type of stuff. So. To establish a performance standard is is more, I think, is is important to to protect future. Homeowners of something happening. Um, so I guess it was John's motion, right? And so do we, do we need to? Have a vote on. Tableting the motion? Is that what we would do?
Definitely, do we want to table the motion?
Um, so at this point, if council wishes to um postpone the the action until a certain time or date, which would be. So they can't indefinitely postpone it, but if it's postponed until the next meeting, then you can make a a motion. Um, have it seconded. If council votes to that, then that motion will now be placed on the next agenda. If that's the meeting that's.
Do we want to with withdraw this current motion that's out there?
It's a subsequent motion to basically it it delays that action to a time and a place.
Okay, so I need a motion to withdraw the current motion that's on the table, correct?
Yeah.
Alright.
This, I I think we can just move to postpone this, the motion that was made to a subsequent meeting.
Alright, then uh before we do that. Councilmember Smart.
Yeah, I just have one quick comment. I. So I I want to say that um, I I am. Determined to figure a way out to to allow this action. To happen in this particular case. I'm also determined not to let it impact future properties. So whatever the amendments are. Um, that that's that's my goal. And secondly, I I don't want the the 1,000 foot to be some sort of. I don't want that to get cast in concrete. I want this to be analyzed to find out what the correct separation should be. So. I don't want that to get stuck in people's minds like, oh, we're just going to come back and say there has to be a thousand foot separation. Let's look at it and figure it out. So I just want there to be um. Documented conditions that we can more easily enforce in the future if that's how we're going to do this. And and by the way, I wouldn't also mind knowing if there is any way to rezone this. I think, I can't remember which council member brought up, but you know, is there a way to do that? Uh, is it, is it not a spot rezone? Can we work with? The other adjacent properties to see if maybe they wouldn't mind having a different zone on their property so that it's not a spot rezone. Um, I just, it's the property that I believe they're interested in using is so far out in the middle of nowhere. That it's hard to believe there's not a way to um to do this without. Impacting others in the future. Um, so just, I, so I don't want the. So I'm I'm wondering if maybe if it's really correct that we want to table the motion or retract it. And have a new motion with a new process at the at a future meeting because I'm not assured. That we're going to come up with a good solution and we can't do it here at a council meeting. We're, I'm not sure we're going to come up with a good solution. Through a text amendment to the the zoning. Conditional use ordinance. I mean, I don't know if that's the only way. So I guess we could always vote it down and then reestablish another motion if we come up with some unique solution in the future. So we could table it today, I guess, and then we could decide later.
I would recommend tabling it today and giving it to staff to work on. Uh, that's my recommendation. Uh, Stephanie, did you?
Yeah, so that specific action, so the subsequent motion would be, uh, it it can either be a date and time or a subsequent action that occurs. So you could make that motion to say until staff presents back to council the. Uh, recommendations that you were suggesting with the thousand foot performance standard. So it doesn't have to be specific to next meeting. It can be after staff. The event could be staff bringing it back. No.
Alright.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Ho- ho- hold on. Alright, alright, uh, one, one more, Mr. Feta. Thank you. Um, Alicia, can you remind us what's the deadline for our comprehensive plan change?
Uh, January 31st or the last working day of January.
And then what's the process? How long is the process then to enact that zoning change?
Typically about eight months.
So if we were to move this to change the zone, we're talking 2025 realistically.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Would we want to hear from Mr. Minenhall? I know he had something to say.
Alright, thank you.
Um, my, oh, sorry, my mind was up because I think that more important than the 1,000 foot, my concern is. Uh, a some sort of ability to have noise barrier, whether that's space. Or something because I know that with water, having grown up around pools, that water reflects noise significantly. Um, so I would be concerned, not so much with the 1,000 foot, but with the noise, but I have faith in our planning. Uh, department to be able to work through all of that. So I would be in favor of just. Postpone a motion to postpone until staff can. Uh, report back regarding the requested changes and concerns that council has mentioned at this meeting.
Then um, I take that as a motion?
Yeah.
I'll take a second.
Alright, so Ms. Moran has made a motion uh to uh return this to staff until such time as staff is able to uh address the. Uh, concerns articulated by council. Is that satisfactory? And it's been seconded. Alright, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Alright, we will uh, we will return this to staff and allow staff to work on a solution to try to make this. Uh, work to address concerns that were brought up this evening. Next on the agenda. We have a public hearing with regard to water efficiency program goals. HC and D are public hearing and resolution to approve an amendment to the water use efficiency program goals. Uh, Public Works Director Roscoe Slade will present the staff report remotely.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brink. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, yep.
Perfect. What you have before you, counsel, is a proposed amendment to our water use efficiency uh goals. Um, this was something that was established back in 2008. Um, by the legislature required it to show that we're good stewards of water. Um, and this, this, these goals have been amended several times over the last years. Um, they are required to be uh reviewed and amended or updated. Every time we update our water system plan, which we're currently in the process of doing. And so this is why it's before you. Our last goals were back in 2016 that dealt with keeping our unaccounted for uh water or water loss. Uh, 10% or below on a three-year rolling average. We've maintained that all the way since 2008. And our 2016 goal was to look at our average day demand for equivalent residential unit. Uh, keeping that at 460 gallons per day and over the last. Those were adopted in 2016, so over the last seven years, we actually exceeded that. And we're able to drop our uh ERU down to 441 gallons per day. And so what staff's proposing is to continue with the the 10% of uh distribution system loss. Using a three-year rolling average, there's no change to that, but rather than maintain the 441. We think there's some more uh savings to be gained and believe that over the next 10 year period, we can take that down to 423. Uh, gallons per day for an equivalent residential unit. Um. We're not getting into the measures tonight. We're just simply amending the goals. There will be uh, the measures will get discussed. When we bring the water system plan forward to utility committee and to council. Um, but I can tell you, most of those measures, if not all of them, are on education. Uh, those seem to be working very well, uh, looking at the data that was presented in the the staff report. So. Uh, with that, before we can amend them, we're required to have a public hearing and take public comments on the on the matter.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Slade. Uh, I will now open the public hearing at 7:28 PM. I'll hear in-person comments and any virtual uh attendee comments. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak? Uh, with regard to amending the water use efficiency program goals. Please state your name and address and please limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Duane Junkie. I have lot 123. Section six, I'm right across from the city lot 124. The water consumption on that lot is unbelievable. I've watched 24 hours a day, same systems are on. And if we're watching what water's going out, what does that meter actually identify? The lawn lawn mowing is done twice a week periodically. I'm sorry, I live right above it. I can see every time somebody comes out. And I just, it's like, can we change that park? That's a park, doesn't have a park bench, but the city calls it a park. Is that, can that be reduced down? One tree's gone. It's been gone since the the last storm we had. This uh, what, beginning of the year and it's still sitting there and the tree's gone, but we still have the ring. And we got trees that are sitting there and you got grass and you mow it and you mow it and you water it and you water it. I came from, I'm originally from Michigan. We have area. I came from, I'm originally from Michigan. We have areas that's like that. We actually look for low density. I have all shrub step on our property. We maintain it. We take care of the tumbleweeds. Oh, my gosh. And if, what I'm asking is, if you're looking at the actual water flow to that park, that area, I assume there's a meter. If somebody could please take a look at that and say, whoa, we can reduce the amount of water that's being used right here. And it's, uh, basically a two-and-a-half acre lot. Very good. That was it. Uh, I'm very concerned about the water. So I have a six-inch water line on my property that I have no amusement for, so. I'm sorry, that was a personal.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment?
Yeah, Brown forty-four oh five, Shalan. Um, I would like to, uh, echo his concern, but not just for that part, for all the city properties that they take a look at. Making sure that they're being cost-effective. I know that there's a lot of maintenance on the one coming in. To the city that we could probably look at and reconfigure that would save some money. Um, I'd also remind the city again that, um, I don't know where we are on replacement water lines. But you can make wells after well, and we can bring in more water from Richland and so forth. But if you're just letting it leak out and not making sure that their maintenance and new lines are getting in there, um. It's a waste of money. So, and, and like I said, we've been waiting, um, the second budget cycle, and I'm not, I haven't gotten any. Uh, notification that we're gonna do it this year. Thank you.
Any other comments? And I'll open it up to virtual comments, but I see no one attending virtually. Stephanie, do you concur with that?
Uh, I do not see anyone, no.
Okay, so seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at seven thirty-one P M. And ask my fellow council members for a motion, please.
I move to pass resolution five-three dash two-three, amending cities' water use efficiency program goals.
Second. All right, council, have any questions that were not previously asked? Ms. Moran.
Thank you. Uh, not a question so much as just a comment, uh, related to the members of the community that came up to spoke. Um, having especially native plants being grown around here that are water cons. Water conserving plants is something that I know that we've been focusing on. Um, Mr. Menon Hall has told me that there has been an effort for more of the recent, uh. Developments to have more native plants, especially in some of the parklands that we've had. There is discussion about trying to make sure that we maintain native plants, so it is more water conserving, um, fauna and flora. And hopefully we can continue to do that. I wish that there were a way that we could do some sort of maybe incentive. But I know that that costs money to get folks to transition from having a monoculture of having a lawn to having a. Multiculture of having all of the different shrub steps that can be very beautiful in our area. I know that my own yard, I have a lot of different types of native plants, and hopefully others can see. The benefit to that, because it saves them on their water bill, especially if they don't have, um, uh, irrigation water. I know that some do, but if you don't and you're on city water, it's, uh, great benefit to have plants that don't require a lot of water. And that would help with our efficiency goals. But I do appreciate the work the city's been doing to push for projects to have more. Water conserving native plants.
Thank you. Councilmember Bloom?
Uh, my question is for Mr. Slade. Is, from a long-term perspective, this is setting this goal lower. Um, have the impact, impact on the water plan to, to estimate the number of. Houses we can service?
So it's a good question, Richard. So, um, really, the whole goal is to be efficient with your water. So if we can use water more efficiently, more efficiently, that will delay the next well that needs to be drilled, or the next reservoir that needs to be put in. Uh, it won't stop the need for them, but you can actually delay them, uh, by doing water use efficiency.
Well, is, is, how do we benchmark with other communities?
As far as what their goals, I didn't, I didn't research what their goals were.
Wow, okay, thank you. Councilmember Smart?
Yeah, so I just wanna point out the obvious is that from citizen comment and council comment, that there seems like there was a, uh. Sort of a quasi-action item suggested here that in the future, as we plan for parks, and as we look at the park budget. That we might want to consider, uh, not necessarily implement, because we don't know the cost. You might wanna consider retrofitting some of our current, you know, green spaces, which are not used as green spaces. They're just there for people to see when they drive by. I know what you're talking about, by the way. Um, it seems like a great idea, but I know it'd cost money to even go back and put in. What some of us lovingly consider weeds or natural fauna. Um, but nevertheless, uh, yeah, if we can cut back our water bill. You know, needless, uh, mowing, I'm concerned about the mowing twice a week, too. That sounds. Like something that if kids aren't playing on it, there's no baseball game. Why, why are we doing that, right? So Roscoe and I had a discussion about park efficiency just a couple of weeks ago, I think. And, I mean, it's, it's high on my priority list. I, I want the community to be able to enjoy parks. Um, most like most taxpayers, I don't wanna pay for them, uh, not to the extent that we are now. I wanna, I want there to be. Um, efficiently run parks. And I think Roscoe, um, and I discussed this, and he's committed to that as well, I know, so. Um, maybe this could be another part of our efficiency plan is, uh, cutting back on some of the places that we might not have to maintain. Um, for no reason. So that's a great idea, and I just wanted to point it out and give it. Get it succinctly stated on the record. That'd be a first for me to succinctly state anything, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, council, um, I'm gonna ask for a vote. All in favor, please say aye. And chair votes aye, any opposed? All right. Um, next on the item are eight E and eight F, which are an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget. And a resolution establishing an inter-fund loan from the Water Sewer Fund to the Transportation Improvement Fund. Uh, let's see, Erin, our finance director, will present the staff report. Ms. Gwynn, please.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem. Good evening, council, audience. Uh, this evening, I'm presenting the fifth budget amendment of the twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget. This budget amendment contains one item that involves two funds. Within the Transportation Improvement Fund three fifty-five, the city has several large projects, including bombing range. Uh, road keen intersection, keen road pathway, and the keen road widening projects. Uh, all are in various stages of construction process. A large portion of these pros. Projects are funded by outside agencies on a reimbursement basis. This means there are times when we have progress payments owed to a contractor that are more. That cost more than the cash than we have in the fund. To ta- help with the cash flow of these projects, we put together an inter-fund loan from the Water Sewer Operating Fund four oh one. Uh, not to exceed one million dollars and to continue no longer than December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, this is interest-bearing, so, um. We use the local government investment pool interest rate, which is currently at five point two eight percent. Um, and these will be considered short-term loans. So we'll get a progress payment and pay it. Um, we turn around, uh, our staff is really good at submitting those reimbursement requests fairly quickly. But sometimes there's a, a month lag to when it comes in, and we get reimbursed. So when we get reimbursed, we turn around and pay the loan off. So the interest really is, um, not too much on this. Uh, staff recommends passing both the ordinance and the resolution. Uh, this amendment authorizes an increase in the twenty-three, twenty-four appropriations in the amount of two million, six thousand dollars. And an increase in the total resources in the amount of two million, twelve thousand dollars, bringing the revised budget to a total of. Uh, one hundred and, I think it's one thirty-eight million, if I'm correct. I have it written here wrong. Uh, one hundred and thirty-eight million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gwynn. Uh, is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment on this, uh, proposed budget amendment? I see no one here attending in person, and I see no one attending virtually. Stephanie, you don't see anyone, do you?
I do not.
Council, may I have a motion for the ordinance, please?
I moved to pass ordinance eighteen twenty-three, amending the city of West Richland twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget.
Second. A motion and a second. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, uh, I call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye. I, chair votes aye as well. Any opposed? All right, uh, do I have a motion for the resolution? To establish the inter-fund loan from fund four oh one to fund three five five?
I've moved to pass resolution fifty-four twenty-three, establishing an inter-fund loan from. From four oh one Water Sewer Fund to three fifty-five Transportation Improvement Fund.
Second. All right, have motion and a second. Any discussion, council? All right, seeing none, uh, all in favor, please say aye. Chair votes aye, all opposed? All right, motion passes. Uh, number, uh, next item is the item moved from the consent agenda. It is the motion authorizing the mayor to execute amendment to engineering service contract with J U B for well number two project. Councilmember Bloom did ask this to be moved, and I think that, uh, Director Roscoe Slade is going to provide a staff report. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So, council, what you have before you is a, a contract amendment to J A B's engineering services contract. For well two, um, part of the change order, uh, deals with additional environmental requirements. Uh, if you recall, the city was successful in obtaining two-point-five-million-dollar grant from U S Senator Murray's office. Um, and with that, federal money comes from federal environmental stuff that needs to be completed. So, uh, that's part of this change order. There's also some language or part of the amendment, the largest part, is designing a water line from well two up to flat-top reservoir. Um, the hydrogeologist is expecting the new well to produce nearly fifteen hundred gallons per minute. And our current existing AC water line that goes up Collins cannot handle that much water. So good news, we may be getting more water out of that well. Bad news is, we've got some water line that needs to be replaced as part of the project. The good news is that we anticipated this and included that in the scope of work with the U S Senator Murray's, uh. Uh, scoping for that grant. Uh, the other part of it deals with delays associated with the wells, and I think this is the crux of. Uh, of Councilmember Bloom's questions with that well project. Um, there's about forty thousand dollars with project management and additional construction inspection. Uh, due to delays, and that project is, I wanna say probably about six months behind. Um, part of that is due to the contractor not completing the work within the contract time. And there is contract provisions in the contract that, uh, uh, establish a process to. Uh, the city to collect liquidated damages. Uh, those haven't been determined, but those two things, uh, specifically in that staff report. That deal with, uh, project delays, uh, we will seek reimbursement through liquidated damages to get reimbursed. For that forty thousand, it's part of this change order. Um, council Bloom specifically asked for a project update. Um, because it's, I think the, if I'm not mistaken, it's been at least two months, if not three months. There hasn't been a lot of action down at Flat Top Park. Everybody drives down by Bombin Range and Van Geese, and they don't see anything going on. Um, so the contractor drilled down to a certain point. And I believe it's about a little over four hundred and twenty-five feet. Um, and then they ordered a, uh, screen. So there's a screen, and we actually went with a screen that has the filter pack built into it. And, uh, we've had delays procuring it, and, uh, that, that screen has now showed up. And so the contractor, what you're gonna see, uh, the drill rig mow back next week. Uh, they will, uh, insert the screen, finish their production. I believe they gotta go down another hundred feet. They'll install the screen. And at that point, um, they'll do the, uh, water testing and the pump testing. Um, so a week of them mowing back next week, another three weeks of drilling, setting the screen. Um, and by the end of September, we'll know exactly what that well will produce as far as gallons per minute. And we'll also have water quality testing to know if that water needs additional, uh, treatment. So that, that's kinda where that project is, is at. Hopefully that answers all, uh, Councilmember Bloom's, uh, questions.
I was just gonna add one, one additional question, which was, um, the putting the well back into service. Will not, uh, will occur before we put the new line in. Uh, in, and then bring it up to full capacity?
Actually, the, so once we know what the well will produce and, uh, the water quality. The well driller's done, and we will finish the design for the pump, the well building and the water line. Uh, that will go out to, to add probably late twenty twenty twenty, well, probably spring or summer of twenty twenty-four. And the still, uh, the goal is to have it all constructed and operational right after, I'd say, the first quarter of twenty twenty-five.
Council, may I have a motion on this item, please?
I moved to authorize mayor to execute amendment number one to the well number two. Project Engineering Service Contract with J U B to increase the total contract amount. For, uh, one, one hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred seventy-seven from five. Five hundred thirty, thirty-eight hundred to seven, seven hundred. Five thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven, including four hundred, forty-eight thousand, three hundred in management reserve.
I have a second.
Second.
All right, um, other questions? Councilmember Smart?
Yeah, just, just for the record, not to be critical, but it's, it's, it is forty-eight thousand, three hundred in management reserve. Just so it didn't sound like four hundred and forty-eight.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, uh, seeing none, uh, call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Chair votes aye, any opposed? All right, none opposed. Uh, uh, we made it through here, most of this. All right, we have no unfinished business and no new business tonight. Uh, we have our second citizen comment period this evening. Uh, if there is anyone that would like to come forward and, uh, uh, give us, uh, some comment, you are welcome to do so. That is not on the agenda this evening. Yes, thank you. All right. No one? All right, uh, I don't see anyone attending virtually. Do you see anyone, Stephanie? Okay, now comes to staff reports. Um, I'll start with, uh. Yep, Erin Gwynn, go ahead.
I never talk, but a quick update, uh, we do, we are currently undergoing our audit. Um, some of you council member, members may hear from the auditor. He just started, uh, right when I got back from vacation, so. Uh, just a heads up.
Thank you. Any other staff comments? Uh, Roscoe?
Uh, just real quick, since we were talking about well two, I may give you an update on well three. Uh, that drilling has gone a lot better than well two, a lot smoother. Uh, they're down to, uh, they'll finish up this week. And do some testing. They're down about five hundred, uh, feet. We'll know if that one needs a screen as well, or whether, um, it's good to go as is. Uh, but that one definitely went smoother, and originally that was about, um, six months behind well two. And now it looks like both wells will be on the same schedule to get completed in the first quarter of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, sir. Uh, no others, uh, yes, Chief Grego?
Thanks, Mayor Protem, and good evening, council. Um, I just wanna say thank you to everybody that was involved in National Night Out, uh, this year. I think it was one of the best we've ever had, at least as far as my career goes. Um, and I really appreciate all the effort out there, because we couldn't have done it without the public and everybody else that's supporting us on a continuous basis, so thank you.
Council comments? Councilmember Moran?
Thank you. I would first like to echo Chief Grego about the National Night Out. It was really a great event, and I appreciate everybody that showed up. It was fantastic, and I finally got to meet Polar. Um, so that was a really fun time. Um, coming up for myself, for council. Uh, the Ben Franklin Council of Governments is having. Coming up for myself, for council, the Ben Franklin Council of Governments is having their board meeting this Friday at 10 AM and I have made it now a habit of sending the agendas to the mayor and also to Mr. Menon Hall and Mr. Slade. So thank you for those that responded. I want to make sure that we present a, a solid front from the city to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So thank you for responding on that. Nothing major coming up in Ben Franklin Council of Government. We are approving some tip amendments, or that is on the schedule at least, the agenda to approve some tip amendments. And one of them does involve some West Richland projects that we have going on. And the Tri-Cities Mobility Action Group event that was going to happen today did get canceled. So the next meeting, I'll have to look and see, but I don't know when that is yet. But it's upcoming.
Council member Bloom?
Two things. One is West Nile virus has been detected in West Richland and the mosquitoes out there. So while Ben County mosquito control does an excellent job, there's a lot of water and a lot of mosquitoes out there. So where repellent, be aware, it was detected out at the golf course. It was detected over on you know, Gross Cup area. So just because we found them, that doesn't mean that people are getting sick, but you won't know for a month. And if you get a bad case, you'll regret it. And so use your mosquito repellent and assume that those buzzing things will possibly put you in the hospital. So it, we've, we are not the only area of the Tri-Cities having this. There's areas in Kennewick, areas up the valley as well. So the birds bring it in and we pick it up. So the second thing is I would like to appreciate Chief Greco's efforts for the veterans. I think the veterans presentation or the veterans Assistance Center at the Ben Franklin Transit Board meeting was, was very positive towards getting resolution to have transportation services to the Veterans Center in Pasco. So thank you.
Thank you. I just have two short announcements. I have served for a number of years on the state's forensic investigations council. Governor Inslee, I guess, decided to reappoint me for another four years. Surprising me, I'm a little bit outspoken sometimes, but we'll have a new governor in a couple of years, so I don't know if I'll still be on it or not. But I'm, I'm privileged to represent the Association of Washington Cities and also the City of West Richland on that council. And then second, at the recent Association of Washington Cities Annual Meeting that was held in Spokane at the end of June, my fellow board members chose me as the AWC Secretary, which is a stepping stone to the role of Vice President and hopefully eventually President in a couple of years. So I'm once again very proud to represent West Richland on the Association of Washington Cities and taking on a little bit greater role and hope I can do, do what's best for our city and for our state. So that's all I have. If there's nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:54 and it says here it's still 106 degrees outside. So, so watch, watch the heat. All right, thank you all very much. Appreciate everyone coming tonight as well. No, no executive session tonight. Yep.